I call to order the special meeting for the Lake Havasu Unified School District on April 3rd, 2025. Row call, please.
Evelyn Tinsley?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Here.
Matthew Houston?
Present.
David Huh?
Here. Now, we will have a moment of silent prayer and private reflection. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, now approval of agenda 2.1? Need a motion?
I move to approve Agenda 2.1.
In a second.
I'll second.
Evelyn Tinsley?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
Matthew Houston?
Yes.
David Huh?
Yes. Now approval for the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I second.
Evelyn Tinsley?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
Matthew Houston?
Yes.
Yes. Now, Item 3.2, Human Resources Report, please welcome Director...oh, no. Oh, that's part of the consent, never mind.
We're on 4.1.
4.1, Human Resources Insurance Rates, Mrs. Bitterman.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the Board. Last week at our regularly...not last week, last month, at our regularly scheduled board meeting, I was requested to bring back information about insurance rates, specifically increasing the district contribution on our employee and spouse plans, so I have that for you tonight. Currently, in fiscal year 2025, there are 23 staff who elect the employee spouse plan. If the district increases its contribution to 50% for this plan, it would result in an additional cost of approximately $50,000 based on our current enrollment trends. This adjustment would provide an annual savings of about $1,600 for employees on the Health Savings Plan, we call that HSP, and $2,300 in savings for those on the EPO Employee-Spouse Plan. Something for the Board to consider, there are some uncertainties with this potential change. Specifically, we do not know, nor do we have a way to collect how many eligible dependents may qualify for coverage on the employee spouse plan. Additionally, by reducing the cost to employees, we may see an increase in participation, which could lead to a higher overall cost than the figure presented above, the $50,000. We do have approximately 550 employees, so we're currently at 23. If that number doubles, which is not out of the realm of reasonable, this cost could kind of spiral and get pretty large pretty quickly. So, I hope that was kind of what you were looking for, and if you have other questions, I do have other information I could share, but that was what I was told to bring back, so there you go.
Thank you. I think this is great information. Yeah, definitely, there's a concern there in that this cost would bubble as more bring it on. I think going forward, we could keep this into consideration going to the next budget session, but for now, I'd probably keep insurance plan as is. Dave, anybody else?
Something we...the Board also may want to consider moving, you know, as we go into our budget session, is to maybe look at what it would cost to add dependents instead, you know, see, you know, what would be more valuable to our employees, adding dependents or adding their spouse, and just see where that brings us as a district.
Yeah, we could, you know, prior to next open enrollment, open enrollment is scheduled April 14th, but going into the following year, we could certainly send out a survey to staff prior to going into our benefit renewal meeting in February. I did have some numbers for you, if you did want to know about the figures, it would...what it would look like if we took the employee-child plan up to 50% coverage, or the employee children, or the employee-family plans up to that 50% number you guys had requested. I have it if you'd like it.
Yeah, I take it.
Okay. For the district to cover the employee-family plans, we currently have 43 employees that utilize that coverage. Under the HSP and the EPO options, that would cost the district approximately $70,000. To increase our employee-child plans to that 50% threshold, we're looking at about $22,000, and we currently have 44 employees that elect that option. For the employee-children plan, so no spouse on there, just their children, we have 32 utilizing that option, and that would be about $38,000. So, if we did it for every plan across the board, that brings us to $180,662 and some change.
That's a big number.
All right, is there any further questions for Mrs. Bitterman? All right, thank you so much. All right, moving on to Item 4.2, Governing Board, New No DEI Policy. First, I want to welcome everyone to our Governing Board Meeting Special Session this evening. Tonight is a work session to work through the language of the next three agenda items. In our room tonight, we have some administrators and coaches and staff. This is a work session, I'm going to ask that staff members, specifically on some of these coaches, gym, our physical education teachers, we want to hear from you and our administrators as we're writing this language, how we can be understanding of how it affects your school, affects your day-to-day routine, and make sure that we're not handicapping you from teaching, especially on our no grooming policy, the last thing we want is you constantly monitoring conversations, and we want you to be able to just educate children. So, we look forward to hearing from you tonight. So, first, Item 4.2, the No DEI Policy, and I'll open it up now for discussion from the Board.
Yeah, I think this is a good start. I have a definition that I gave, I would strike the last sentence on it, but I...adding to this definition of what we mean by this diversity, equity, inclusion, I think narrows it down from the idea that it's...I know there's been people that brought up, oh, this is going to, you know, isolate the disabled or other classes. What it is tar...what this is, is saying that we are not going to use those in our hiring and decision-making skills. This is based on your merit, and as I've been going through this policy and thinking on it, the idea that we need this to bring those type of people to the district, I think, is a fallacy. Opening up our hiring and our decision based on merit will bring diverse people already. To say that it wouldn't would to say that those diverse individuals don't have the merit, and they do. I've served within the Marine Corps, I've studied with them in college, law school, I work with them in county. There is already a diverse merit-based population in this county, in this city, and in this district, and we don't need DEI drive to make that happen. So, I think this phrasing makes it clear that it is not about excluding groups or things like that, we're not anti-diversity, but we are not using this framework to try to artificially create a diverse group. That already can actually exist based on merit.
Okay. All right, thank you. Vice President, is there any further discussion from any other Board members?
So, for the policy itself, are you proposing that we start out with the definition that you provided?
So, it'd be just how...so, under policy statement...
Actually, would you mind reading the definition so people know what we're talking about?
Yeah, no problem. So, DEI, or diversity, equity, and inclusion refers to a controversial and often criticized framework that prioritizes identity-based characteristics such as race, gender, or ethnicity over merit, competence, and individual ability. In this view, diversity is seen as a forced inclusion of specific groups regardless of qualification. Equity is interpreted as the artificial leveling of outcomes through preferential treatment or lowered standards, and inclusion is framed as a coercive push to conform to ideological norms, often at the expense of free thought or genuine fairness. So, that would be under the policy statement as that definition, and then it would go into policy guidelines.
I will say, I am likely to be overruled on this, and that is fine, but I will say that I fundamentally disagree with your definition of diversity is being seen as the forced inclusion of specific groups regardless of qualifications. I would argue that diversity policies are meant to prevent the exclusion of specific groups regardless of their qualifications, that that is the purpose of diversity policies in the first place, is to make sure that we are choosing people based on their merit and their competency, and not choosing people because they're white, or able-bodied, or male, or straight, or whatever it is, and kind of just naturally fit in, that we are opening up our hiring practices to make sure that everyone feels welcome to apply, and that everyone will be judged fairly.
Well, what's wonderful, that this also bans individuals using race preference, so it's...refers to a controversial, often criticized framework that prioritizes identity-based characteristics. That goes both ways. We are saying, it doesn't matter i-if you are trying to promote one race, so say the whites over another one, that's also a race-based characteristic, which is what we are saying no to. Diversity will exist based on merit. There are applicants of every race, creed, and color that will come to this district that are technically and proficiently skilled to be teachers, to be members of this community, and be members of this school. There...the idea of diversity already exists when you put Americans, you know, you put an application out, you're going to get diverse populace regardless of taking their character...their, you know, race characteristics into account. So, I hear your concern, and I understand it. I don't see that's going to happen in our district, and I think that this policy makes both sides inappropriate, and it sticks to the idea of merit, competency, and proficiency.
I hope that you are right, okay? I do feel like your optimism is maybe idealistic.
Well, I expect everyone in our district to essentially be idealistic as well. I don't know any racists in our district personally. I have not worked with any racist that would make decisions based on race only. I don't know where this hidden agenda is. I don't see it. I have not seen it in my time in the Marine Corps, in my time in college, in my time in higher ed, in my time at the county. This is a phantom that has been used to push this ideology into every institution across the country. So, if it rears, you know, if that specter rears its ugly head here, I will be the first to swing the sword to kill it, but I don't believe that it will happen. Perhaps I am idealistic, but I do believe this policy holds the line for both sides.
I'd like to hear from Mrs. Bitterman, Human Resources, to just speak to our current hiring practices, and maybe address any concerns that has been raised today.
So, our current hiring practices, we...when we post a job or a position, we review the applicants based on their qualifications. We're looking for what education they have related to the field. We're looking for what similar experience do they have related to the position that they've applied for. In the case where we have numerous applicants, we start with what are their qualifications? What are their experiences? They get the first interview. If they don't have the relevant training, experience, certification, they might be left out of that first round of interviews. That's just the paper screening process. In the interview and the selection process, it's a committee decision, and it's based on the quality of responses that they have, and kind of what we're looking for in that specific role, so...
How many are on the committee?
Depends on the position. For our administrative positions, you'll expect to see anywhere from eight to 12. We try to have a range of support staff, certified staff, fellow administrators, and community members, parents. For some of our other roles, our support staff roles, paraprofessionals, custodial, office assistant roles, you can expect anywhere from two to four, sort of dependent upon the time of year, the circumstances, who's available, but that's our typical process.
Okay. And do...just a question, would you foresee this definition being an issue when it comes to hiring practices in this district?
Not based on our current practices.
And it sounds like we already have, I mean, we have committees. It's not a single individual making that decision.
And is it not true that all final approval for any hire comes through this Board on the consent agenda?
That's correct.
So, we are the final stop in approval of any hire, so that allows us to have checks and balances to ensure that we are not, you know, have any issues when it comes to hiring, and that we are hiring based on merit, and that no one is being discriminated against. So, awesome, thank you, Mrs. Bitterman.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion?
I will just add one more statement, that it does not make sense to me to say that we are committed to preventing racism, that we're committed to ensuring fairness, while, on the other hand, rolling, like, making a specific policy that rolls back the protections against those types of behaviors.
And thank you for your input. I would just like to say, DEI creates racism. It creates division, and I'm not open to it being in our district, and I just want to remind this Board, this is a federal mandate. If we so choose not to implement this, we are facing losing federal funding. It has already begun to happen in school districts across Arizona that refuse to implement DEI policies, and as the President of this Board, I'm not willing to risk the funding and our education of our students, so, thank you. At this time, I call for a motion to adopt this paragraph.
We actually don't vote at this meeting, it's just a work...
Okay, I didn't know if we could add that, okay, awesome, okay.
So, yeah, add, yeah, this to that.
We will just close the discussion on this item and move on.
Okay.
Yep.
And is there any...because we do have staff in the room that can help with some of this, is there any administrators that would like to speak to this before moving on this evening? Okay, then we'll move to close discussion on Policy 4.2.
I second.
Evelyn Tinsley?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
I didn't say yes, but yes, but I actually don't think we vote on discussion items.
Do not?
I think we just close the discussion.
Okay, close the discussion.
Learning's occurring.
All right, all right. Item 4.3, New Safety in Locker Rooms, Restrooms, and Sleeping Quarters Policy. We do have some of our physical education teachers and administrators in the room tonight that I know have emailed us and have been part of this conversation. Before we begin our discussion, I would like to open it up for any of you in the room tonight that would like to speak to this, or be able to just give us some guidance as we write this policy, and maybe some of your suggestions, if any of you...
Is that about there?
Yes, ma'am. And please state your name and your school.
Okay. I'm Naomi Severson, I'm the middle school PE teacher, I'm one of two. The only thing, when I first read this, I don't have any issue, I would say, like, with the sentiment behind it at all. We do have a policy, whether it's a written policy or an unwritten policy, that deals with some of this at the middle school, but one of the concerns for me with this was the language, and I don't know if you've changed it since the last time I read it, yes. The school district shall provide such accommodation to any person who, for any reason, is unwilling or unable to use either a multi-occupancy restroom or changing facility, et cetera, so I'm under number one right there. When we have students come into the middle school from sixth grade, their number-one fear probably across the board is using the locker room, changing in the locker room, and we have students, like, actively trying to avoid PE just so they do not have to change in a locker room. My job as a PE teacher is to help them through this process and make them feel safe in that space, and we actually, in the girls' locker room, have shower stalls with shower curtains so they feel like they can hide and have some privacy when they change, and that's one way we accommodate them. Usually, by eighth grade, they don't care. But that any person, for any reason, we do not have the facility to accommodate every single incoming seventh-grade girl or boy that wants to change in a stall. So, if the intention with this policy is for students that are dealing with identity issues, or in some cases, severe anxiety, that is, I mean, some of these kids have issues deep-rooted from other things, we might want to check that language a little bit, I think...
And it was in our notes to cross out, just to refresh the Board, thank you for bringing that up. We had spoken in our last meeting to cross that language out, and in this meeting, to come up with language to replace that.
Okay, perfect.
And that we had also spoke about crossing out employee...the employee restroom, and add that there to use the nurse's office, if need be.
That is, that's our current policy, is students go to the nurse's office if there is an issue with changing in the locker room, and that limits the number, and we usually have one, maybe two a school year that will encounter that with, but for the most part...
Now, is it possible for students that feel shy to use...how many, like, shower stalls or restroom stalls do we have at the middle school and per locker room?
So, we ask them not to use the restroom stalls, and I know, like, in the high school locker room, if they use the restroom stalls, they'll get detention because they have such a small amount of time in there to change that we need to save those for people that need to use restroom. We have several shower stalls. There's curtains hanging on probably 15 of them, which can present a problem occasionally. I mean, it's a supervision thing, I have once had two students in one shower stall before, and at that point, then, they're no longer allowed to use shower stalls. Boys' locker room, they don't take care of things the same way, and so there are no shower curtains on the stalls in the boys' locker room. We have...we accommodate, so like, if a parent calls and says, my son is absolutely petrified, like, this, he doesn't want to go to school, he is sick, I mean, absolutely, like, come in my, you know, obviously not a boy, but you can use the staff, we do make accommodations, like, he can come in our bathroom. We just don't advertise it in a major way because it will be every student's preference.
Yeah.
So...
And I think if you just said, upon receiving written request for... Upon receiving written requests for a reasonable accommoda...or written requests to use other accommodations, the school district shall provide reasonable accommodations. The next section lists what reasonable accommodation is, access to a single restroom, changing facility, use of the nursing...use of the nursing bathroom, and I put, because as you said, kind of at your discretion to use, I don't want to ban you from using yours, so, at the discretion of district employee to use employee restroom. So, gives the authority back to you to make that call, and I'd like to put in there that we're not going to armchair quarterback your decision on that and say, well, this wasn't a reasonable denial, or, you know...
That's a...if my restroom is being used, it's per parent request, and that's, I just feel like, for me, that's to cover my own hind-end thing, right, that I have a student in my restroom, so...
It does sound like you're already kind of observing the policy even before it's in place, though.
Yes, yeah, it is, it is working, I mean, that's kind of how it's already working, but I don't know that it's actually on paper, so it might be the wise thing to do, I guess, to have it written down.
Okay.
Okay, my good.
Thank you so much. I would like to ask, she didn't know what to call her, Mrs. Barney, if you could explain to us, since you are the only representative here tonight from the high school, I believe, and...
But she's at the middle school now.
She's at the middle school now, so, could you just walk us through to make sure we're not strong-arming our high school as well? And I want to reiterate that this does not apply when our teams are traveling, or teams are traveling to us, so please understand that, you know, when our boys' football team or basketball teams travel, a lot of times when they're at a, you know, the away team school, they have to use the girls' facilities, you know, so we are not applying to that.
We need to put that specifically in.
Yes, we need that, that way it protects our coaches and our teams.
So, nobody...yeah.
Mrs. Barney?
So, the high school, thankfully, the middle school does a great job getting them used to using a locker room. We have fewer kids that are shy about using a locker room. We do not have any shower stalls with curtains currently at the high school available, so there is no private changing. They do not allow them to change in the restroom because there's only four stalls, and if people are changing in there, nobody can use the restroom because it takes longer to change than use the restroom. We do offer kids typically to use the nurse's restroom or the administration office if they are super, like, there's a concern, there's a transgender thing that parents are aware of and have signed off on. We do not allow it without parent consent.
Perfect.
And we also allow it for kids with severe anxiety that just can't be in that environment.
And do you feel that you're adequately being able to address the amount of those issues that's coming forward?
Yes, because it has to come from the parent.
Okay.
We don't get a lot of those requests, typically maybe one or two a semester that I'm aware of.
Okay, so it's not something that's overwhelming, you know, making requests or issues, okay.
Right.
Awesome. All right, thank you so much. All right, I will now turn it to the Board for discussion.
Yeah, I think a pretty simple change would just be, Policy Guideline 1, upon receiving a written request for rest...we can write restroom accommodations, the school district shall provide reasonable accommodations to that student, period, and then, too, a reasonable accommodation may include either the following, A is fine, we change B to nursing station, and then we add C, at the discretion of district employees, they may be allowed to use staff...employee restrooms or changing facilities. I think with those, it pretty much sums up everything that you guys are already doing, and that can be a pretty clean, straightforward policy, with the addition of maybe number five, this policy does not apply to sports teams using opposing, you know, schools, facilities, you know, women's restroom, girls' restrooms for their sports teams. I think with those, that's pretty much cleans that up.
Any other discussion?
Okay.
All right, then we will close discussion on 4.3 and move to Item 4.4, No Grooming and Child Protection Policy. We have added in this, so when we discussed this prior, one of the concerns that Mrs. Nowakowski brought to my attention was tutoring, and Mrs. Nowakowski, if you could come and if someone could get this to her, I would like you to have a copy of this, and we want to be able to make sure that our teachers are not handicapped when you're tutoring students. We are here to educate children, and we want you to be able to do your job and do it effectively, and the Board not interfere with that. So, one of the things that I have added is one-on-one tutoring exception. Teachers may conduct one-on-one tutoring sessions with students under the following conditions. Parental consent, written permission from a parent or guardian must be obtained prior to any one-on-one tutoring session. What this would do would be protect our teachers. So, we have written consent, we're not putting you in a vulnerable situation, we're not just depending on the student, saying, oh, yeah, my mom said I could stay after school today, and then we have an issue, so this is to protect you. Visibility, sessions must occur in a public or observable location, such as a classroom with an open door, library, or a space with windows to others. Tutoring in fully private or secluded areas is prohibited. In other words, if you're in your hallway and your door's open, you know, there's still people in the building, that's okay. Your administrator knows the student's staying after, I believe we're covered there. And then time limits, I'm sorry, documentation, teachers must log the date, time, location, and purpose of each session with records maintained by the school administration, so we would just turn that in, that way it's logged, again, to protect the school and our teachers, and if there's any questions from parents, then we're able to go back and say, you know, this student was here today at this time. And then time limits, sessions should occur during school hours or pre-approved after-school hours, avoiding late or unusual times that could raise concerns. And then finally, supervisory oversight, a designated staff member, such as the principal or counseling staff, must be informed of the tutoring schedule and may conduct periodic check-ins, just that they're aware of what is happening in their building. Again, we added this because we want to have accountability, we want to, at the same time, make sure that our...you're not, as teachers, being interrupted to do your job, so...
And I would suspect that they do a large piece of the documentation already because tutors receive stipends usually for it, or some sort of compensation, and so they're already logging when and who and how long and everything.
Yeah, and I'd like to make sure that, to make this simpler, is that we have a consent document generated from our district that a teacher or individual can just give to the student that's requesting tutoring, so it's not, parents feel they have to handwrite something. It's a streamlined document that makes it simple for the parent and the district.
Mrs. Nowakowski?
Thank you. My concern was a personal concern that I brought to President Rosen, Board Member Ramon. I have students, I have a hard time saying no when they say, can I stay after school? Yes. We are a neighborhood school, kids can walk home, parents, we dojo, as soon, you know, they're staying with me, okay, great, and then at 5:00 or 4:30 or 4...and I've had students stay till 6:00, so, because I lack boundaries. So, that was why I...that's where I, you know, where I was like, wait, but that, so, this will help, and then if you do create that log for us, that I think that's generated and sent out to all staff, but because, yes, I do Title I tutoring, so... But because yes, I do Title I tutoring, um, so that is logged, but this is Monday, Thursday and Fridays that I don't do Title I tutoring. So these are the other days that I'm doing it on my own time, um.
And I think we should add class dojo as a written consent. If there's communication between the parent and the teacher. Then that should suffice in this policy as written consent, it's documented, um, we're able to access it as a district and our administrator. So I think we add that as written consent.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
And, you know, I guess, because are all the students that are staying late doing tutoring?
What they're doing is like, for instance, so today I had a student that, um, just takes a while to take a test. And so he, um, took some time during Friday to take the test, took some time today to take the test and then finished it up after school. And then he's like, I would like to finish my I Excel skills that, you know, you assigned. I said, okay, go ahead. And so he does that. So those are, so he's, he's on his own.
So you're providing a workspace.
Exactly, yes.
I'd like to add this, so it's not just for tutoring, but for school-related actions, right? Providing a place where a student can do their homework.
Right.
Or it sounds like, you know.
Tutoring study hall.
Yes, yes, and even support. I mean, there are students that don't want to go home.
Right.
Providing a safe place.
And I have one of those that.
I want to empower that as well. We don't, you know, teachers change children's lives in many ways. And so I would, I don't want to limit the teacher's ability to do so. So, you know, maybe we expand it not just for the tutoring to, uh, you know, study hour thing, as long as we can catch it in that, we're good.
Right, and sometimes the home life is noisy at home or they don't have a quiet space.
Yeah.
And so I don't have the problem, you know, because my children are grown and gone.
Yeah.
So I, you know, I can provide the space for them and they do. And I have students from the other classes that sometimes stay with me also, but, but yeah, that's, so that would be great. And yeah, that was my biggest concern.
Okay. Yes, Mrs. Barney?
So my concern with the language just is like, how would this affect a kid staying after one time to make up a test, but the test is going to go until four o'clock? Do we have to get written permission for that kid to stay after? Because the way the language is written, maybe we would. I would be a little concerned with that, something to think about.
Superintendent, do you have some input on that?
I mean, do you use the class dojo at the high school or remind, what I'm just trying to think of. Like say, hey, you know, Johnny needs another thirty minutes to finish the test, is there some type of documentation that comes?
Currently, we don't have a standard messaging system at the high school. I am meeting with Jackie Murphy to discuss class dojo at the middle school level.
So I was thinking like something that's quick and easy, that's spur of the moment type of thing. Like a spur of the moment, like they just didn't finish the test, like how can you like, you know, get something to the family through a messaging system, you know?
And, and the high school's a little bit different case than the middle school. You know, you're talking about students that are driving themselves to school. So I think as we look at this policy, we need to understand that as age groups grow and, and students mature, that, you know, there's a big difference between a seventh grader staying after school and a twelfth grader. So.
And, and I guess, so in an instance where a student is staying late, is there already a communication with the parent? I guess how, how is that student notifying their parents of their location?
Typically at the high school level, we leave it up to the kid to make their own arrangements.
And so, and I, I don't exactly how to sure to phrase it, but, you know, instances of, you know, coursework extending beyond the end of, of school a, a, in a non-recurring instance does not need to be reported. But if it becomes like a reoccurring thing, then the log comes in. So if it's, hey, I'm taking a test, I need twenty more minutes, it doesn't trigger this.
Making sure the other team members know, so if it's an algebra test or, you know, you're in math department, make sure the math team knows, hey, I'm in here, you know, door's open, I'm in here with a student, they're just finishing their test, you know.
Yeah.
So making your, you know, your team aware also.
One way we might be able to do it is, high school has what we call office hours, which is like a guaranteed time, Monday, Wednesday, Friday. So maybe if it's outside of office hours or something like that, that kind of uses our language in there.
What time is, what time, is that?
Office hours are Monday, Wednesday, Friday from two thirty to three.
Two thirty to, so the, okay, those are the typical hours teachers have, open Monday, Wednesday, Fridays.
Yes, it's like open tutoring, any kid can pop in, you just leave your door open.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. Like standard, standard office hours do not need to be reported. It's, it's, yeah, so standard office hours don't need to be reported or individual instances of a student needing to stay late to complete assignments, tests, et cetera. But when it's a, a reoccurring time and place and location with the same teacher, with the same student, uh, even in instances where they stay late habitually, that's when we're starting to collect that, that, we want that information. Because that's, a single instance is not going to become a grooming incident. It's when the adult and the child develop a long-term relationship, that's when we start having concern. And that's when the teachers should be protected in a sense, um, by having that documentation, no accusations can be, you know, thrown your way.
I feel like with the tutoring though still, I don't want to be the difficult one, but they're, oh, I mean, don't get me wrong, they're driving themselves to school. It shouldn't really make a difference because they're still under eighteen. It shouldn't matter if it's middle school or whatnot, it still needs to be documented.
So if we, if we categorize it within the standard office hours and then, you know, single instance events.
Yeah.
Basically, we do capture everything. So if they're driving themselves and they're doing normal tutoring, that's going to be documented. If they're just going to normal office hours, we're not going to throw the burden on the staff to have to document everybody who comes to standard office hours.
In office hours, there's multiple, everybody's there, right, so you have multiple eyes.
And you know, correct, it's a declared time saying, my door's open, come in. So you're, you would assume behaviors are not going to be taking place in that space.
Yeah, okay.
And none of this, I, I don't think is meant to discourage a teacher from developing a rapport with their students and vice versa. I mean, we know, I can think back to my favorite teachers that I liked to visit after school and it wasn't, there was no impropriety going on whatsoever. It was just, I liked that teacher and I wanted to say hi after school, you know. So we don't want to discourage that because we know you love your students.
And there's a mentorship relationship that takes place. I've received a lot of mentorship through high school and middle school from teachers that you, you don't want to discourage. But in this day and age, we do need protections and I think these are the, the right ways. And I, it also, it looks like we have a, a definition more of the prohibited behaviors for what grooming means.
Go ahead, if you'd like to read that.
Yeah, I can read this one. Um, so prohibited behaviors would be staff, volunteers or any individual in contact with the students are strictly prohibited from engaging in grooming behaviors included, but not limited to. Providing gifts, money or special privileges to a student without a clear educational purpose and parental consent. Initiating private, non-educational communications with students, e.g. personal texting, social media contact or secretive messaging. Engaging in overly personal or physical interactions that exceed professional boundaries. Examples, unnecessary touching, sharing intimate personal details, attempting to isolate a student from peers, family or other staff without a legitimate educational reason. I would add just blatantly, engage in any conversation related to sex, sexuality or sexually explicit topics, should be blunt about it. With that definition, it kind of clears out what we mean by grooming and what grooming behaviors would look like. So in the reporting portion of this, I think maybe in the next one, um, that kind of, these are the behaviors that we're looking for. If we see, if you see somebody isolating a student, has a, a teacher's pet type thing.
Mrs., Mrs. Bitterman, go ahead. You just attended a training for this.
Sure did, all of our administrators did, from the State Board of Education. Um, I did want to point out, Policy four two oh two, um, has a pretty extensive list of, I'm looking at nineteen specific items that I, many of which I just heard you, um, refer to. Um, my concern would be that we just want to stay as consistent and clear and concise as possible. So in that policy, it's very specific, flirtatious communication, including commenting on a student's attractiveness, appearance or dress. Banter, allusions, jokes or innuendos of a sexual nature. So I, um, my question is, do we want these things defined in both areas? Do we need amendments to four two oh two?
Oh, we, I mean, we could have this listed here, uh, in this one and just say, for further clarification, see policy four two oh two. We just cite to that, so we, we've included, we'll include both, um, and that should cover all bases.
I think it mentioned all the things you were just using, so, and, and then, and then some favoring a student with special treatment, I heard you mention that.
Yep.
Um, it also speaks about sharing rooms on overnight trips, you know, speaks to the private spaces, transporting a student in private vehicle, so, um.
Does it specifically, and say, uh, engage in conversations related to sex, sexuality or sexual topics?
Um, it does, I'm looking at it right now, so it does say banter, allusions, jokes or innuendos of a sexual nature. Then, let's see, being alone with a student behind a closed door, physical contact that lacks legitimate educational purpose. It does specifically say sharing intimate or revealing photos or images or asking a student to share intimate or revealing photos. Um, addressing a student by a personalized term of endearment or a pet name. So I, I do believe it's, it has most of those.
Yeah, and I, I kind of liked some of the stronger language here. Um, so I personally would do have these keep, and then all examples in policy four two oh two also apply. Uh, and then that covers the full spectrum. It sounds like four two oh two is, has good individual examples. These can be kind of our broader, you're right, so engage in sexual, sexuality, sexual related topics, big umbrella, and then we have specific example instances in four two oh two.
Well, and do you remember last meeting when I printed this out and gave each of you a copy? Okay, so there are, I mean, almost everything in, well, I will say, everything that you listed is already in policy. You might want the stronger language and we could probably just add that into four two oh two because I feel like the cleaner way to do that would take, if you have specific things that you want in here, just adding it into four two oh two. Instead of having a separate policy where people have to read two different things.
Yeah.
If you wanted to say something about specific, it, it does seem important to you that the, that the phrase no grooming is in there. Again, I will say, we already have the staff and student boundaries very clearly listed out and they have been for years. And so this feels a little bit more like, um, a play for publicity than true policy. Because you're trying to, it, it feels like you want to say that you're doing something new, even though it's not new. We've had this in policy for years.
And I couldn't care about what they think. It's about getting definitions and getting our position on the board.
Right, but we have a very clear list of prohibitive behaviors already.
I would guarantee you that we can find other things that are not listed in here that would be covered by this broader language.
Like what? I gave you this list last month.
I mean, I, I would come up, you know.
Go ahead, which ones do you have a problem with?
No, I don't have any problems with here. I'm saying it, it does not, it's not all encompassing. Where broader language of engaging in conversation related to sex, sexuality or sexually explicit topics covers anything that might be perceivable.
It says in there, um, nothing of a confidential or private matter, no, no, that would include anything sexual. That, that is an umbrella that would cover all of that. I'm, I, I don't really, I don't have a problem with putting in something that specifically says no grooming. I am just pointing out that we already have policy that prevents grooming. And so, uh, this feel, again, this seems more like it's for the headline of now we're preventing grooming when we have been preventing grooming for years in policy.
So I spend a lot of time on this and, um, I see benefits to both. I do think the language grooming is what our community is really looking for us as educators to do, to make sure that that is not happening. Um, and I don't see that clearly defined in policy four two oh two. The other thing with the presented policy that I think is helpful, um, if you all haven't seen the news right now, there is a district in the valley that is under, um, some pretty serious action from the State Board of Education for failure to report. So when I look at item three on here, I'm not sure that it is as clear as it maybe could be. You know, it talks about child protection officers. We, we have a reporting requirement to the State Board of Education for certificated employees for any action that rises to the level of immoral or unprofessional conduct. Um, I, I don't think our current policy four two oh two maybe does a good enough or strong enough job on that reporting procedure and that reporting requirement. Um, I see value to both of these and I think there's a way that they could potentially, um, be brought under one umbrella. When we adopted this policy manual, it is much more concise than our former policy manual under Arizona ASBA's policies. And, um, and having to work with our administrators on implementation, the clearer, the more concise and the more direct they can access the information, um, the more successful they will be in enforcing and implementing it. So if I have to look through five policies to make sure that I've captured all the different nuances and requirements and definitions, um, I feel like we're opening ourselves up for missing something. Whereas if we have one policy, this is our stance on staff and student boundaries, this is our stance on grooming, and we capture all the components in that one area. I think it'll just be a lot more user-friendly, a lot more practical for implementation purposes. But I do think under item three, we need to be pretty specific with that State Board of Education component because it is, it's not always the first thing we think of as educators. We're always thinking about child protective services, but we have to hold one another accountable as educators for not doing these things with our students.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So would it be your recommendation then that we add, we take four two oh two and we add in the definition of, of grooming, the, sort of the beginning paragraph on this policy? And then also the part in section three where it talks about the reporting requirements?
Can you scroll up for me? I just want to see what I, oh. Yes. Yeah, I, I think that the, you know, the objective or the purpose statement is appropriate, um, the scope is appropriate, definitions, you know, I, I agree with. And the training and awareness, we're actively, already working on that before we knew this was coming. But yeah, I think there is room, whatever that looks like, to potentially bring these under one policy, just so it's really clear and concise. And I think there's pieces of this that could strengthen, um, that definition and understanding for our community and for our families and, um, staff. But to have it multiple places is.
Well, we, really, we can just blend these two. So, you know, take, take four two oh two and essentially stick it into, or we can, to make this the new two, four two oh two.
Emerge the policies.
And just make four two oh two, staff, student boundaries, no grooming and child protective policy, have that in there. And then when we, in the what is grooming, we just stick these definitions.
Yes, and we could strengthen the language, you know, as.
And you're not wrong, Lisa, that, you know, sex, innuendo is a section of private, private matters, but when I read this private ma- oh, I didn't know that's what that meant. We were just talking about anime or this or, oh, this topic, but it's not private, it, there's just, with this language, it's.
So in our training, um, to kind of broaden on private matters, when we talked about sort of the steps to grooming that do eventually lead to those, um, sexual offenses. They will start gaining the trust of the victim and the family through private matters, maybe such as, hey, can you check my mail this summer while I go to Europe? And it, there's nothing sexual about it and, and it's maybe even not inappropriate and there's no ill intent there. But that could be that entry point for someone that is looking to prey on children. So I think that's, um, these, these policies, just so everyone knows, they're written by Trust Model Policy Services. The Trust is our liability coverage, our insurance program. They're written by attorneys. And I think that they left that broad private matters in there so that if you're the math teacher, yes, you want to build rapport and get to know your students. But why are you now telling them about your personal vacation plans for the summer and why are you asking them to your home?
Yeah.
So.
And, and, and would you say, it, it seems recently the Department of Education in Arizona, not just in Arizona, but across the nation, has really focused in on grooming training so that everyone is aware that this is an issue. And, and I just want to remind this board that in this very community, that we had a teacher, not in this district, but in another school that was not attached to this district, that had a student living with them. And built an inappropriate relationship and groomed that student. And so, um, the, the language in this, Member Ramon, I agree, you know, some of that, but it's deep, grooming is deeper than this. And we need to just be very clear, um, of what we are wanting. And again, this policy is to protect students and our teachers at the same time.
And not saying that the district has not been attempting, this is a good start. I, I, and it's, we're not trying, we don't, I don't care about any publicity.
Correct.
I just want a good policy. And that covers us, that covers them, and that makes everybody more comfortable. So this is a good basis. So I, I do think if we can blend these two, and we can either keep this as the four two oh two and just call it now. just call it now, staff, student boundaries, anti-grooming and child protection policy, bam, now we've got in one place, easy to read, a nice definitional list, nice broad statements of what is banned, and we can move forward, also encompassing the protections of the tutoring exceptions, all in one space.
Yeah, and that's why on the professional, you know, prohibited behaviors, um, where it says, "Providing gifts, money, or special privileges to a student without a clear educational purpose." So it's not that we don't want you to reward your students for doing great things, um, and that's why, you know, the language says, "without clear educational purpose." Again, um, for educators in the room, um, some of you are the best influence in your student's life, and we don't want to hinder that relationship. Uh, many of you have students that come back and see you years later and share with you that you were the person that really turned their life around and made an impression, and those relationships are important, and we don't want to ever put a stop to that. Again, this is to protect inappropriate relationships, so.
And so on that one, I actually had a, kind of a playing devil's advocate here. It's, again, teachers love their students, and they want the best for them, and so I can imagine a situation, a underprivileged student, poor student, needs lunch, needs food, needs something, needs clothes on their back, and the teacher, just as a human, you want to help people.
Yeah.
Will that be, like, are we going to define clear educational purpose as facilitating the student's ability to be successful at school, so that we're not hindering the generosity and/or compassion of a teacher? Um, again, that is, that is a dark, that's a tricky line there, but.
Would you like to, that's a great question. Yes, go ahead.
Devil's advocate on this.
Mrs. Noak.
I just want to throw out there really fast, I do like how you brought up about the fact that too many policies in different places would be confusing. I do like that, and I like the fact about combining things and clarification, because that was a good outline in general that you did bring, but yeah, for clarification.
Yeah.
That definitely brings up confusion.
Yeah.
I guess it definitely could be a hard one spot as one that.
Your mic.
As one that looks at the policy almost daily. Um, it does all need to be, it would be nice. The thing that, um, came to mind, um, when Mrs. Bitterman spoke, I was a form, I was at Thunderbolt for 16 years, and at that time, I had the cream of the crop choice for my babysitters. Um, so it did, like, trigger a thought, what, where would be, what would be the boundary there, because I could choose great babysitters to take care of my children that I knew were, I mean, yes, I did establish a relationship with parents, but I just want you guys to be aware that we live in rural Arizona, and sometimes we don't have.
I believe that if we add with parental consent.
Okay.
That that should be covered.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, that is.
I know, it just, I'm just saying, like, I didn't want to throw a wrench in there, but I just, like, oh.
Just. Mrs. Bitterman, could you speak to that from an HR standpoint?
Well, and, and many times, the groomer's first target is the parents. So even with parent rental consent, the parent is the first target to gaining, um, trust.
You are exactly right, but then it is the parents' responsibility, not the school district's.
I guess, you know what?
Like, if I'm looking at a school policy.
You're right, it's your right to be a bad parent.
Well, and not just that.
Or not, not even a bad parent, but just someone who trusted the wrong person.
And I think if we added.
You're right.
I think if we added that the minute, the administrator of the school is aware of that, um, and all parties have signed off, um, and the, so, Mrs. Bitterman, could you come to the mic? Again, we're not trying to government overreach.
She's all thanks.
So, this is a good point that I did not think of. From a human resources standpoint, what would your suggestion be in this scenario, understanding this is a rural community? And, I mean, we, we have students that are professional babysitters, that are making money, and, you know, so how do we address that to protect this policy, but also understand that we maybe need some leniency here?
I think first and foremost, in the ideal world, um, the, the student is no, is no longer in your specific class. Um, is that always possible? No. Um, I had young children, they're able to kind of, you know, do their, do their own thing for an hour or two, but yes, I also am in that same boat, and am fortunate to have, um, taught some really exceptional students. Um, but that question always needs to go to the parent. Um, and I would typically wait until they were not in my class. So there was no question about, oh, um, and this isn't even related to grooming, but just fairness in general, oh, well, you're Mrs. Bitterman's favorite because you babysit her kids. No wonder you got an A on that test, right? Like, it just opens our staff up for.
Accusations.
Things that, yeah, and, and so I would say that would be our best practice, um, that if you're going to use someone to get your mail, or babysit your children, that ideally, they would not be in your class. I think absolutely, you nailed it, it has to be, like, arranged through the parent, not through the child.
Yeah.
Um, the parent has to consent on that.
And I, and I could say a consent form, you know, just to cover everybody's butts, right? Teacher, administrator, parent, sign a contract, hey, everybody knows about it, it's above board, open and obvious is the easiest way to stay above board.
I don't know how much we can police everyone's personal lives.
And that, it's essentially, it's just notice.
Right.
What you do, but if you're a, a district employee engaging with a district student, the district's reach is a little bit involved there.
Superintendent, would you like to speak to that?
I was just thinking, you know, you think about outside, I mean, yes, we're salaried employees, we're always on, you know, call, but thinking about the contractual kind of hours in the classroom, and this is Saturday at, you know.
Right.
Eight to 10 for the parents to go out to eat type of thing, right? So, you know, I don't know about a, it'd be, maybe a little difficult to have a written consent form from the school district on a Saturday night at eight o'clock to go to the movies and to eat.
Yeah.
So that might be a little difficult.
I would also.
I don't know.
Well, we can't govern what people do in their private time, so.
And they're probably calling the parent anyway and saying, hey, can, you know, Sally at eight o'clock, you know, babysit my, you know, kids, so.
Yeah.
I would like to think that the parent's already giving permission, because it's probably at night.
And, and we also have to understand that there, there's relationships beyond the school district. We have families that go to church together, that play sports together, that families are friends, and, and so we, it's not the, the responsibility of this board to engage in those relationships, so, um, so I, I think we just.
Yeah, I, I think it has to be parent permission, um, for all the staff in the room and anybody that watches this, I would encourage you to talk to your administrators about it as well. Just sometimes administrators, I, I had a situation where I thought I had an outstanding babysitter coming down the pike, and my administrator had information about things happening in that child's life and with their family, and I was advised, like, maybe not right now. I would have no idea. So I do think it's best practice, I don't think that it's something we can necessarily mandate or require, but I would strongly encourage that you are speaking with your administration, if you're doing something like asking a student to babysit, check your mail, water your plants, because you're still no.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Bitterman. Any further discussion?
Just as kind of my closing remarks on this, um, I am happy that we are strengthening this policy. What, what I'm hoping to avoid is any sort of narrative, oh, thank you. Um, I'll start over. Um, I'm, I do support strengthening this policy, but what I'm hoping to avoid is any sort of narrative that says, "Wait a minute, it's April 2025, why is our school district just now getting around to preventing grooming?" We have been preventing grooming this whole time. Strengthening our policy is one thing, but acting like it's an entirely new thing that we're doing is not accurate, is not fair to our teachers or administrators who have already been.
Well, we got the press right here, so.
Yes.
Our open statement is, is not that this is a new idea that the MAGA team brought, we are simply here strengthening the policy of what the district was already doing, and making the policy clear, concise, and more complete. That is all.
Do it.
It's not new.
It takes so little to make me happy.
That, that, we, it's nothing new in the sun.
If we just knew that the whole time.
The district is doing a good, is doing a good job before, we're just updating policy.
Absolutely.
So.
All right.
You can run that.
All right, so discussion is closed on 4.4. All of these policies will be added for second reading in next Thursday's regularly scheduled governing board meeting for final approval. Um, last agenda item is item 4.5 for discussion, and it is the lease of the Daytona property. Um, as you know, um, governing board members, ASU has made it public that they are vacating our Lake Havasu Daytona campus, um, in that this board still has not been officially notified from ASU, um, but we have made agreement that we have a responsibility, um, to do our due diligence in what is best moving forward. Um, and remember, Ramon asked this to be added on this evening, to hear from anyone that is in the room that would like to speak to that property, and potential opportunities that you would like to see there. So we are going to open it up at this time, uh, for any, any open discussion that you have on that property, ideas that you have, um, and, uh, then we'll discuss this aboard.
And this is just the first conversation, not the last.
Correct. Carol, you have nothing?
I think I already shared it all with you, but, uh, you and, uh, member Tinsley, when we met.
I think I already shared it with, uh, member Tinsley and you, when we met, there was a few of us, we had a lot of suggestions. Um, we suggested even me, uh, going, um, whether making it a middle school, moving, some, I've heard some people say, "Just move sixth grade there." Um, I don't think that's best. Um, we did talk about, I think, even a primary, having, I know, um, my niece who teaches in Texas, I think it's a K2, uh, and then they have like a five, seven, five, even eight or nine, so just, uh, so it's a K2, maybe three through five, but just breaking it up, and then you have all of your kinder first, second grade teachers there that can collaborate and work well together. I know, as I said earlier, I did 16 years at Thunderbolt. I had four other teachers, three other teachers that I was able to collaborate with. When they shut down Daytona and they moved us, that left me with maybe one if we did self-contained. At that time, we were not doing self-contained. I taught math, and maybe we shared one other subject. I had to wait till articulation, until maybe Karen and I could chat about, so, or we would send emails or whatever it was, but we didn't have the capability to work together. And so those were things that we had concerns with when that left. So if we could figure out a way, um, I totally support the middle school name, and that it's a sixth, seventh, eighth grade. Um, I have a passion for the middle school. I don't know if, um, that is even an option. I know we shut it down because of financial issues. It wasn't, it wasn't, we didn't shut it down because it was best, and that's what I've told everybody, and I have repeated it for 15 years now, um, that we didn't shut Daytona down because it's what was best practice for students, but it was because financially we couldn't afford it. And so, um, I would like just to look at what would be best for our students, and move forward in that direction.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
All right, Carol gave you the little perspective, the high school perspective. Um, we've talked about maybe a CTE campus where we could get the ROTC, because we currently can't have an ROTC, because we don't have a dedicated gym, where Daytona does have that dedicated gym, and we could bring some more programs in for that light.
That's a recommended.
If not that, another college coming in that can help with our DE classes, because we're currently struggling a little bit with that aspect, would be nice.
Okay. All right.
Sorry, we, I know I'm kind of putting you on the spot, do you have DE classes in mind that aren't really covered right now?
We have a lot of them currently covered, but the way we're working with MCC, it's a little difficult to get instructors qualified. Right now, we would like to see calculus be a DE class rather than an EP class, we think we'd get more enrollment, just going that route.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. And what, um, sorry to bring you back. Um, how do you feel bringing a university in could help strengthen our CTE programs in the district?
Well, that would depend on the university and what they offer. Right now, we do utilize MCC for a lot of our CTE courses that go beyond our scope at the high school. I know they do HVAC there, they offer welding, which a lot of our students take advantage of, and there are those students that don't have anything academically, sometimes they need that trade. But if we could bring in a university that offers even more trade, that would be fantastic.
Okay, all right, thank you. Yes, sir, you may.
Could you define your acronyms, please?
Yes.
Sorry. So, CTE is career technical education, DE is dual enrollment, so that's a class that they get both high school credit and college credit at the same time.
Thank you.
Awesome. All right, thank you, Mrs. Barney. All right, and is there anyone else in the room that would like to just speak to the Daytona property? Okay, thank you. We'll bring it back to the board at this time. So I think moving forward, we, we have those discussions. Obviously, this board wants to do what is best for this district and for this community. Um, we are extremely disheartened by the position that ASU has left Lake Havasu City in, in this district, the promises that they broke, um, and this board wants to ensure, moving forward, that whatever relationship is built, or whatever project we work on to, you know, partnership potentially to go in that property, that it is someone that sticks to their promise and doesn't break it. So, um, we, again, we are disheartened, the city is disheartened, uh, there was a lot of work put into that campus, um, there was a lot of promises made by ASU that were not, unfortunately, kept, um, and I feel this board has a responsibility to make sure that doesn't happen again, so, that's my comments. Anything else?
With them leaving, I mean, uh, Mrs. Barney mentioned calculus specifically, and ASU was offering, or is offering through the end of this year, um, a STEM bundle kind of class, so it's, um, if I'm not mistaken, it's physics, calculus, and engineering. Um, and so that is a big, um, gap that we will need to figure out. No matter what we bring to Daytona.
Correct.
We, as a board, will need to figure out how to, um, fill that gap for the next year.
Yeah.
Yeah, and all, I'll have to say on this is, is, um, the, the contract was not exactly in the best interest of this district, and this board, every member on this board, is going to make sure that the next, anybody who comes in here, or however we utilize this property, will bring value to the district, not just taking from it.
And on that topic, I mean, I know we discussed the lease in executive session, but the lease is, is public information.
Contract is, yeah, it's public.
Would you want to clarify the shortcomings of the lease, or are you okay with me doing it, or?
Yeah, I can, I can take it if you want. In, in essence, astoundingly, and this is, as an attorney, this contract is unconscionable in, in my mind. In essence, ASU has paid our district zero dollars in the last 14 years for the use of our property. There is not a business entity in the country, there's not a church in the country that does not rent out its gymnasium for a profit. We were allowing the use of our property for zero dollars, and the way it was contracted this, it was for 60 years, automatic renewing term every five years, and ASU did not have to pay a dime unless, I believe it's 60 days before the end of the term each within a year, so each five-year period, every year within that, we had a 60-day period to notify them that we had a space shortage, and then it was a calculated whole conundrum of how they would have to pay. I did a little bit of math, and there was a, a floor and a ceiling. The ceiling was four, about $4.1 million, and the floor was about $3.1.
Yeah.
So, to, for, for, for a public university that has billions of dollars in endowment, millions of dollars in profit, to take from a rural community one of the uses of its property for no money, I, this contract is unconscionable, and we will be getting value out of this property. Anybody, any university that comes in here in the future, or if we use it, we will be getting paid for the use of that property. Now, what that is and how we negotiate it, that'll be out, whether or not they get a break on the first few years when they're dumping money into developing our CTE programs, or our dual enrollment, or building an ROTC program. Well, that's an exchange of value, but we will be getting value, and permanent value for that property.
Yeah, we, we want the, you know, again, um, and our council has even questioned some of the legalities of, of, of the lease.
Yeah.
And, and so we want to ensure, moving forward as a board, that those things do not happen again, um, and we want value brought to this community, and we believe there is great opportunity, great potential, and, um, it is the job of this board to ensure that great partnerships happen, um, whether it's partnering with local, whether it's looking at outside partners, um, to bring educational value to Lake Havasu City. So, um, we look forward to working together and moving through this process and updating the community, um, as we do.
So I guess at this time, the board is, we are taking any interested party who wants to negotiate or discuss that property, so through the proper course, putting it out to the public, any entity that wants that. to the public, any entity that wants that, that they can come to the table, but we are going to pick the best value. So nothing further on that matter.
All right.
And like I said, I mean, this is the first conversation, but what, I think that we should set up a meeting to hear from, to hear presentations from people, you know, I know you've only had a couple of days notice that this is even on the agenda, but presentations from people who have ideas for the campus that we can consider.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, if there's no further discussion, we'll move to item five for announcements.
I actually just want to throw a couple of things out.
Oh, sorry.
I feel like my heart's still burning after reading that contract. I mean, sweat from that. But anyways, I've had a few people that are teachers or whatnot that have said something about that campus, and they would like smaller class sizes. That was something that was brought up. Another thing that was brought up too, for whatever does go there, it would be nice to be able, if it was like a different university or whatnot, if it coincide, anything that had to do, for instance, if kids went to MCC first because it was lower in cost, if those credits would be able to transfer to whatever does come in. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
Yeah, to ensure reciprocal credit between MCC and any entity coming in, further benefit the community. I can see that. That's a good ask for anybody.
Yeah, absolutely. All right, item five announcements. Is there any announcements at this time?
Well, I just want to, so I heard from a community member that they were confused on whether we were going to have public comments during only the call to the public, or on each of the agenda items. And so we've done it a couple of different ways over the past couple of meetings, and so I felt like it would be good to communicate publicly which way we are doing it.
Okay, and I'll take this one. We've had great discussions so far as a board. We brought, this is our second, we're setting, maybe third now. We've had a lot of discussion, and we want to continue that. There are parameters of getting stuff done, though, and there's times where we need to move through it. We will always have the call to the public, so if you want to talk, that is your absolute. So if you want to talk, you want to get on that agenda and speak, that is your method. Because as the board, we are going to manage our time and manage our ability to engage you, so there will be some times on topics that we don't take comment. We don't have time, or we're just getting it done. So again, if you want to make sure you speak, please use the call to the public, because there will not always be a guaranteed time. We're going to do our best, we want to hear from you, we've already displayed that, even in opposing ideas, we've called to the public. But I don't want to shackle us to always having to call or always never calling, so...
So the answer to that community member would be, sometimes we will allow individual comments on individual items and sometimes not.
Yes. But call to the public will always be there. So if you want to talk, you'll always get to talk.
Superintendent, would you like to speak to that?
No, and that's the board's decision.
Okay.
I think the time that we didn't...
I agree about the timeframe, sometimes on special sessions or work sessions, it's really meant for the board to work through things, so you might not have time. Regular board meetings, absolutely, you need to have a public comment section. But it just depends on how much time you have for your work session.
Correct.
So I agree on the time.
And there are some agenda items, like the consent agendas, that, you know, it's just voted on. There's never, you know, we're not going to call someone to speak to that item. A board member has an, you know, opportunity to remove an item, to place it under discussion if we so choose.
And the agenda is posted before. You know exactly what we're going to talk about, you know, each consent item, or each item that we're going to speak on, discussion item. So if you want to speak on that item, do your due diligence, see what we're talking about, make your call to the public, and speak on that item.
And if you have questions past that, please feel free to, our email is on the district website. Please feel free to reach out to us. My phone number is available through, I can't speak for all board members, but my phone number is available through the district office if you call and ask for the superintendent's office. Leanna is able to provide my cell phone. If there's questions about an agenda item coming up, or concerns, maybe even if someone that can't make it to a meeting, but you would still like to give comments, so we do want to hear from the community. I feel that is extremely important, so...
Absolutely.
All right. Item six, point one, we will need a motion to adjourn at this time.
I move to adjourn.
I second.
Yes.
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 Yes, meeting adjourned. Have a great night. See you next Thursday.
Good work.